Sir, you can write the rest of your inputs because you see 400 people here. Three minutes is finished now.
Let me, I will move over to my concluding statement. Thank you. Even if it is stated on paper that there is free access to ROK.
Look, we don't want to set a precedent, no. When your three minutes is finished, let's respect it and you can submit your inputs to us. We will capture them, please. Wakile here is keeping time for every speaker. Please, let us not deviate.
Thank you, the honourable panel, and respect to all the dignitaries. My name is Pesessi Bata. I represent the PCO of Lenezia. And in here, on behalf of the ANC, I reject what the Afri Forum has submitted. And I wish to advance that ministers, cabinet members are human beings and are also susceptible to cohesion or any undue influences. What I would like to submit is that all choices of this bill are adopted entirely. And I will qualify this by saying, NHS is a British public-funded healthcare system. The NHI is our own South African baby-funded system. And it should be adopted entirely as our South African solution. If you get involved in an accident between a person who is covered by medical aid and he's wrong and you are not covered, a helicopter picks the person involved in the accident when it was only in the 45 minutes, NHI is going to stop that and give us equal access to healthcare services. And in conclusion, I would like to say that to everyone present today, this is a bill we have to support government entirely. Don't be misled by misinformed NGOs, parliament opposition parties. Let us all adopt this bill totally. And Nizwe Ngokomrate played in the Monday when he said, "Don't be voting cows, be independent thinkers." To be an independent thinker today, support the NHI, Yonke! We are adopting Amanda!
Thank you, thank you. Wakile, please, you must look at me when the time is up, no? So that I'm able to stop those who are exiting their time. Number three.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Dr. Honas Mukari. I am here representing the Progressive Professionals Forum, PPF, which is an organization comprised of professionals such as medical doctors, lawyers, engineers. We've got quite a number of healthcare professionals that are represented in the organization. We're here to support the bill. The bill has been presented in full. We are not going to repeat it. But we are to confirm that as doctors and as professionals, we support the bill in its entirety. We believe that we believe that the national health insurance is the only way to achieve universal health coverage. As we're sitting here, leaders across the world, they are meeting in New York to review progress in terms of the sustainable millennium goals, 17 of them. And one of these goals across the world is the achievement of the universal health coverage. And we believe that NHI is a one step towards achieving exactly that. And we believe that across the world, wherever you go, every country has a program of achieving universal health coverage. There is a threat of some of the professionals who can threaten to move away from their country. It is not true, because in every corner of the world, each country is reforming its health system to achieve universal health coverage. As South Africa, NHI is our platform, our financing model for us to achieve the objective of the United Nations Millennium Sustainable Goal. There are many challenges in the health system and we believe that NHI has got many of the solutions. First and foremost, there's a challenge of migration whereby our health system is overwhelmed by illegal foreigners. NHI is very clear that it will cover all South Africans and it will cover everyone who's in the country illegally. Those that are illegal in the country will not be covered. All will happen is that they will only be covered for emergencies or infectious conditions that can be a threat to the population. But that will reduce in a big way a number of access to our facilities by those that are illegal in the country. Number two, the current system is based on affordability. When you are sick, Chairperson, when you are sick, you are entitled to get healthcare, but the current system is that when you are sick
Doctor, your time is...
You cannot be able to get excellent care. That condemns you to death.
Thank you, thank you. I wish people who are raising issues here, they should not leave. So that when the presenters come to give responses, they remain part of this meeting. Number four.
Good morning, Chairperson and members of the committee. My name is Bouche Tladi and I'm a member of the Financial Intermediaries Association of Southern Africa. So we represent over 1,600 businesses that offer financial advice to members. I start by acknowledging that we support fully expanding universal healthcare and we've made a full submission to the committee on our full views. Our collective commitment resolves around the principle of a healthcare system that is accountable to the communities it serves. We are very enthusiastic about, we are supporters of a world-based primary healthcare system and seeing it as a powerful mechanism to improve the individual healthcare at a municipal ward level and contribute positively to job creation at a municipal ward level. Furthermore, we seek practical solutions in terms of how we move forward. So we recognize private medical schemes as a national asset. We acknowledge their potential to drive healthcare innovation, reflecting our dedication to fostering advancement for a broader healthcare sector. We may differ on our stance on approach. However, what remains undisputable is that South Africans require a better system and one that is inclusive and one that fosters social solidarity. Chairperson, in conclusion, we wish to find a way that seeks to avoid litigation given the potential for the current NHI bill to face legal challenges. We are driven by shared responsibility to safeguard health and well-being of our citizen. The risk of a lengthy court battles cannot be underestimated. Therefore, in our submission made to yourselves, we offer details and proposals in terms of what amendment needs to be made to the bill to bring South Africans closer to each other. We propose a way forward that begins to bring this debate, which should bring us together and not polarize us further. So therefore, we champion the goal of achieving universal healthcare. We are very passionate advocates about positive change and we stand ready to contribute to the way forward in our determination to be collaborative and to build a more prosperous and healthier South Africa. Thank you so much, Chairperson.
Thank you. Number five. Okay, can those who have written down already, you can already give us those because we are capturing everything. It's your time, sir.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Mpuemalinga. I'm from an area called Loli. It's a very small township, Chairperson. Chairperson, I'm number six, by the way. I don't know what happened to number five. But anyways, thanks for the opportunity. I support the bill, Chairperson. I support the bill especially on the section 39 that says the healthcare providers and healthcare establishment must be credited by the NHI fund. You know why I say I support this bill is because there is an overload of patients in our public hospitals who need critical surgical operations. And the number is so big that when an old person, an old person who's a pensioner, who's not covered by medical aid, gets into an accident or has some sickness of one kind or another, is then told that, okay, we've diagnosed you, you are now going to have an operation, but there is a queue that you must face wait and wait in a period say about six months to eight months. Now, that becomes a problem because the patient can die in the process. And come to a fact whereby across the road, there's a private hospital with an open bed and doctors are ready to perform the surgical operation. It can be funded by the fund. So I'm welcoming the bill with open arms because we need it more than anything else. We need it more than anything else. And we know that the National Department funds the healthcare departments. They fund them equally, the public and the private. But the public is overwhelmed by majority of our people who are using it. Even those who have medical aid come to our hospitals, they come to our clinics, they take the little that is there for those who are in it. So with those words, Chairperson, I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven.
Thank you, Chairperson. Greetings to everybody. My name is Ethel Khadebe. I'm from Hauteing, Soweto, in Ward 28. I am the community activist and a member of the ANC. My preamble is first to accept the bill in totality, without any amendments. And I want to say that we commend the government to come up with this bill that is based on humanity. Because it's based on the constitution to be just, non-discriminatory, and to take care of everybody and the most vulnerable, which is our people. And the second thing, sorry, Chair. It is a global thing. This is an international standard to provide universal coverage, as this has been cited. It is a United Nations position. So we are not making a mistake here and want to differ with Agri Forum or they are gone. That this bill is not going to preempt failure where the vision is very clear. So this bill gives us a chance to bring our people on board. The most vulnerable, those who have nothing. And we want to commend our government for their humanity stand. The last thing I want to say about the bill. It has eliminated the greed of private sector that collects profits. When the medical aid is exhausted, these patients are sent back to the public to overcrowd the public. And it's about profits, not humanity. Anything that is not human must be eliminated. In conclusion, we will wait for the protocols and procedures, particularly on section seven, that talks about the pathway and how we register our doctors and all those things. We hope the portfolio committee will fast-track those so that we can start engaging and educating our people on new processes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number eight. Thank you, ma'am. Eight.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow South Africans, fellow Hauteing province members. My name is Mark Hume and I'm the Hauteing Chairperson of the South African Medical Association. We represent 4,000 doctors in this province and 12,000 in the country. First and foremost, we must say we absolutely support the idea of universal access to healthcare. There can be no other way forward. There are too many people in this country who have inadequate access to healthcare. But we must express a number of grave concerns. How will it be funded? Where will the government get the expected 500 billion rand required to fund the NHI project? Already, our finance minister has said very clearly, just in the past few weeks, we do not have this money. We feel there has been inadequate consultation with the service providers, especially doctors and nurses who are the backbone and on whom the health system entirely depends. We are concerned about all the missing details in the NHI bill. There is no information whatsoever on conditions of work hours, remuneration, leave, pensions, and so on. Specifically, and this is of grave concern to patients, there are no details of how we will set standards on the quality of healthcare provision and how we will maintain them. Unfortunately, our track record in the state sector in this regard is abysmal at the moment and the provision of healthcare can only be viewed as suboptimal. How will this change all of a sudden? The single purchaser is problematic from a human rights perspective as it takes away individuals' rights to acquire healthcare cover other than that provided by their government, even if they want to pay for it themselves. The single provider is problematic as evidenced by the state of many of our governmental healthcare facilities right now. What will happen to the private sector? It's funded by people's private voluntary contributions, not government money. And if people do not have access to private healthcare that they have paid for themselves, they will simply not pay and a 278 billion rand industry will disappear overnight. Finally, the powers afforded to the Minister of Health in the NHI bill are hugely problematic for us. And they certainly do not comply with any globally accepted system of ethical healthcare governance which would require committee oversight and large groups of independent individuals running a system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number nine.
Okay, I'm good. Good day, everyone. My name is Ethan Sissi Tutavanesa. I'm head of corporate affairs from an organization called Exocell Youth Project. It's from the Johannesburg city of Johannesburg region in Soweto. I'm a bit, I'm for the National Health Insurance Amendment Bill that has been presented before us. However, I've got questions. Of course, I understand in terms of section 27.1b of the Constitution that it is our constitutional right, or rather everyone's constitutional right, to receive better healthcare. However, we know what had happened with the PIC, the corruption that has happened there. How much assurance do we have? I know that the speaker that was speaking on the podium has explained that perhaps there would be 18 committees of establishment that would be assigned for monitoring and evaluation. But I'm also seeing the provisions of the Public Finance Management Act that we are not yet clear about, that are going to be incorporated in this bill. In terms of consequence management, what kind of mechanisms are then employed? And I'm hearing chairmans of the board, not commissioners. So if we were administering a fund, I understand that there should be commissioners and fund administrators that actually invigorate the process of actually managing funds. So in terms of the law, we need to understand how much assurance do we have that corruption won't be there when this National Health Insurance Fund is actually executed? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 10. The last lady number, number, we are on number 10. Number five has gone rogue.
Good morning, Chairperson. I was actually supposed to be number nine. So I think it went from six to five. So I think five was the mama there. Good morning. Lutalo Tuduzmofumana is my name. I've got, I support the universal healthcare. It's a beautiful concept. All right. I support the whole NHI. It's a beautiful concept. It is ridiculous that our healthcare system is very expensive, happening to be one of the most expensive in the world, with the poor not really having an access to it. The few questions that I have, a few questions, like clarity-seeking questions. The first one is the issue of the medical aids. What has been said by the speakers, they've touched very little regarding that. I'm the member of this community and I'm also from the working class. So my concerns is, the first one is the funding relating to medical aid schemes. The coexistence between NHI and medical aid. So there's not really clarity there. Is it going to be optional now to have medical aids and then you join the scheme? Or can you be in both? And then, because if you remember, when it comes to, let's say, the government sector, for example, their workers are forced to have medical aids in a lot of sectors. So what I'm asking is, will that then change when this is being introduced? Because then it will not be fair if then they contribute to both schemes whereby they contribute to the medical aid as well as the NHI. Because the funding model that I've seen on the parliament page, it was saying that there will be a sourcing of funds from the employees themselves and it will work similarly to the UIF. Secondly, what I wanted to seek clarity on is the issue of influx. Because what then happens is that it is likely that people will choose to go to the private sector and then leave the public sector because of the various complaints that are there and the under-resourcing of the public sector. So will NHI assist in resourcing the public sector as well? So that there's not an influx that a huge number of people abandon the public sector, the public service hospitals and then run to the private sector and then still create the same problem whereby now people are not being fully serviced. So that's the only thing that I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. Greetings to the ANC. My name is Muzaiyse Llovu, who's the head of the Health Subcommittee of the ANC in the region of Johannesburg. Firstly, I wanted to, I see that the Afri Forum is gone, but I wanted to just bring this to their attention as the beneficiaries of apartheid, that the institutionalized system of radical segregation and discrimination in South Africa had a profound and devastating impact, a devastating impact on access to healthcare during the apartheid era. Healthcare services were severely radically segregated with the majority black population receiving inadequate and inferior care compared to their white counterparts. Inequitable resources allocation and discrimination policies perpetuated vastly disparities in healthcare access, resulting in significant health inequalities. Black communities were left marginalized and neglected, lacking essential healthcare infrastructure, trained medical professionals, and quality services. The apartheid government intentionally neglected the healthcare needs of black South Africans, using it as a tool to further entrenched racial inequality and maintain their oppression regime. They failed to even hear Mr. Msenike when he was speaking about human rights of the people of South Africa, when he spoke about how they are going to pull the bill to fund NHI, when he spoke about affordability of the NHI. So I wanted to bring that to their attention. Now, access to healthcare in South Africa, health services was primarily determined by affordability and socioeconomic status. This created a vast disparity in healthcare outcome where only those who could afford it received properly medical attention. Unequitable resource allocation. With the NHI, resources will be distributed based on healthcare needs, ensuring that even the most vulnerable population receiving necessary care, this approach tackles the imbalances and inequalities of the past, bridging the gap between the haves and the have-nots in terms of healthcare accessibility. On eliminating discrimination, by mandating that everyone registers with accredited service providers using biometrics and other required information, the NHI ensures that healthcare services are provided to all without any discrimination barriers. No longer will individuals be denied healthcare services because of their backgrounds and financial capabilities. In conclusion, the NHI bill stands as a vital instrument in addressing the injustices and inequalities prevalent in our healthcare system by shifting from a past that prioritized affordability and socioeconomic status to a future where healthcare is based on healthcare needs.
Thank you.
We lay the foundation for more equitable society. I therefore support the NHI bill.
Thank you. Number 12.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Aye.
My name is Lesley Bambu from Johannesburg region, Zone 12. After the presentation of NHI, I believe it shows that you are going in a right direction as a country. So currently, I'm partially covered by speaker number two and three. But what I want to ask or emphasize is the public infrastructure. So as NHI is introduced, most of us who have been using the medical schemes, definitely will resign from medical schemes and then go to NHI. So the services that we have been getting from Mil Park, are they going to be the same service that we're going to get from Barra Hospital or Helen Joseph and the rest of the public infrastructure? And then, when it comes to those pharmacies, your clinics, are we going to be able to go and then call the sephora and say, "I've got a child who's sick. As a card-carrying member of a medical scheme, I'm able to go and collect medication for my kids." With NHI, we will be able to go and collect medical from those clinics. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 13.
Thanks, Chair. And greetings to all of you. My name is Pom Tembo. I'm the chair of Ward 18 of the ANC. I'm also the deputy chair of JSE20, here in the inner city. I accept the bill in totality. NHI bill is the best and noble one. People can get what they want and not what they can afford. Those who are opposing the bill is because it's going to interfere with their profit. The current system of medical aids tells you how many times you must go to the GP, meaning you must plan when are you going to be sick. They tell you which doctor you must go to. Can't be correct. Cannot allow that thing anymore. Pam Billy, NHI Pam Billy.
Thank you. Number 14.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Oma Ralisorakwaba, a university student from the University of Johannesburg, qualified community practitioner. I'm in support of the bill because it stipulated in section five. I'm responding to the sudden panic that is being created by those who are opposing the bill, that the bill will be a rush or an action from the government. But in section 57 of the bill, it clearly stipulates that the bill will be in two phases. The first phase will primarily look at primary healthcare. I support the bill also because now, as the other speakers have said, that this bill will give too much power to the ANC or to the ministries. I want to highlight that this bill will readdress the inequalities and ANC's or public officials that operate in any department, they are there to re- they are there to readdress any issues or inequalities. So, MECEs and ministers must be provided a certain power to carry out the mandate of the public. So if we are saying we're limiting the powers of the MECE, we're saying bill but with no material. There are regulatory structures and ethic committees, or ethic committees, that will hold the minister accountable. We have auditors within our government structures and ministries that will audit any corruption or any mal-function. And also, Section 5 also stipulates that there will not be misuse of resources, meaning there will be sustainable development, meaning the resources that are going to be purchased by the ministry, the resources that are going to be purchased through the bill will be monitored by ensuring that every user or everyone who benefits from those services, they are administrated and there is the monetary and evaluation system. So Chair Pessin, I wanted to respond to the sudden panic that is created, that this bill will be a money-making machine or this bill will just be used to exploit or to misuse whatever funds that are there. I want to say, there are bodies, there are structures that are there to hold any public officials. So I support the bill. Let's not create any panic to the public to say, "Let's not readdress or implement the mandate of our people because we are in fear of corruption." If any case of corruption, those structures will work to hold any official accountable. I submit.
Thank you, number 15.
Good morning, Chair Pessin, committee and community. My name is Belega Zeboni, born at Sinyoka Village at the Zenimbilo Health Centre. I have been an IT professional for the past 15 years with two dependents on my medical aid, being my now 70-year-old mother, 21-year-old daughter. And I'm looking forward to the implementation of the National Health Insurance Bill. And I cannot wait for it to become an act and for universal healthcare to be provided to each and every one of us. When we had the COVID-19 pandemic, I was treated at Hillborough Clinic. I was treated at Helen Joseph Hospital, even with a comprehensive medical aid that I am paying in the regions of tens of thousands because I have family in the Eastern Cape, that being my mother in King Williamstown. And when my mother was hospitalized, she was taken care of at Grey Hospital and accommodated at Bishop Hospital and got the best care. So I'm truly looking forward to the implementation of the bill.
Thank you, number 16.
I'm an activist. I think the first point, Chair, is that as a first point. There should be an improvement around systems overall. The registration of users. Or any other place in the country that's existing medical history, so that there can be efficient provision of health services across the board, supplemented by enough medical history. But I do think that as a healthcare system in general, what are some of the challenges within the system in particular? When you look at some of the recommendations and the outcomes of the Health Market Inquiry in particular, the cost of services within the private healthcare sector. That's what the Health Market Inquiry outcomes are saying. Overutilization with no evidence and improvements within the system. So there is no correlation between improvements and the overutilization in the system. So I think how do we implement healthcare reforms overall in general, within both the public and the private healthcare system? And universal health coverage is important. Let's interrogate what the bill says, but I think that the NHI, as a universal health coverage through the NHI route, is quite important. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Now, we are back to number five. Because number five, I don't know what happened to number five. Who misses the number? It's move again, number five.
Thank you, Chair Pessin. From Johannesburg, Zone 2. I hear, I support the bill to be fully implemented because the bill is for the people. We stand here to encourage all the progressive forces of the left to support the bill of the people. We also here, we also want to call on of our MPs to reject the apartheid racist apologies in the form of the Afri Forum. Lastly, healthcare is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you, number one at the back. Oh, is there another hand? What a hijack.
Thank you so much, Program Director. My name is Gosite Tielebong. I'm from the Young Communist League of South Africa. I will be very brief because I have been significantly covered by the latter speakers. But I want to start by saying that I want to encourage the society out there to reject the calls from NGOs and NPOs like Afri Forum, who want to reject the NHI due to the influence of the private sector, who want to continue profiting from the provision of health services. That is the first thing. As the Young Communist League of South Africa, we are in full support of the bill and we cannot wait until it is officially signed into law. However, what worries us, and not necessarily worries us, a concern, is the role of the private sector within the NHI. It is stated in the bill that, you know, private providers, you know, in fact, service providers from both public and private will be invited to provide services. However, it is also stipulated that the process will not be open to tendering. Now, that makes us happy because it then decommodifies the provision of health services. However, allowing the private sector to play a role in the provision of services worries us because the private sector has a tendency to prioritize profit above social needs. Now, can that be explained to us, the role and control of the private sector within the bill? That is the only part which worries us. Otherwise, we are in full support of the act and we cannot wait until it is official, until it is the law. Thank you so much.
Thank you, number one.
From Ward 21, Komle Tsani, Secretary of EFF. I can only introduce three about the NHI. I think the concept is smart. But now here are two things that are concerning about NHI. The first thing, we're not allowed pharmaceuticals, which is a government-owned pharmaceutical, what you call, industry. Now, if you know NHI can tell us what we're presenting, we're not allowed pharmaceuticals in terms of the output production. Yeah, the business is telling you NHI own it all. It's lying on them because in South Africa, 90% of that is owned by Aspen and EDCO. Therefore, if we know NHI, it doesn't have the backup in terms of the pharmaceuticals, in terms of the production and output of pills and tablets in our zone. That simply means we are outsourcing that to Aspen and EDCO in Krem. And therefore, NHI, we're not going to email or pay because Aspen and EDCO will be the one that determines the prices of what we want in terms of the surgeries and everything that is going to be administered in these schemes by NHI. In that aspect firstly, before you tell us about the packages that are in order, we need to understand first, before we can say, "Yes, we are saying we are pro-NHI, yes, NHI should be passed." We should understand first the packages that are in order. It's a thing because it's no point for very yes, NHI, only to find that the packages are the same as your medical aid. And then the most important ones, double cancer, they will be left out where you yourself as a patient, you have to cover the burden of aid. Therefore, at the moment, NHI in terms of the 400 and something billion to 5 billion, that has been estimated to be the projection of it, there is no clear answer on that. When we look at what Aspen and EDCO is owning in the distribution of all of these tablets and the surgery, what you call, surgery by NHI, your nature concept is sharp. But under this administration as well, the ANC, NHI is a flapper. We're going to have a new administration that will speak correctly and
Or wrong. We are not here for political party activities. Can you please speak about the NHI? Whether ANC does flapper or not, that is not for this meeting. Can you hand over the mic? Because we are not talking about NHI now. Can we talk about NHI here, please? We are an apolitical committee here. Can you hand over that mic, please? Sorry, sir. Jettie, hand over the mic because you made your point, but when you go to political issues, that's not what we are here for. If we want ourselves, we've got the house sitting where we are going to be talking and say whatever we want, this is the place for us. But here we are apolitical. You didn't hear me mentioning any party here. Number one. Number 111 here, this side.
Good afternoon, everyone. MECE and Executive Protocol observed. The name is Libina Betanun Estippe, former radio presenter at SDFM and Joseph FM. I'm from Protea Glen Extension 20. I would like to applaud the National Health Insurance for Toby Yence. However, GoProtea Extension 20 up until Go40 something. We do not have a clinic. I know the issue today is about health issues. But also, I would like to bring to your attention, or at least, infrastructure, let it be our daily bread with regards to NHI. And then the last one, because we've got young graduates who are unemployed, please accommodate them when this thing is starting to run and being activated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The clinic is very relevant to the NHI. Thank you. Number two.
Good afternoon. My name is Vincent Mulefe, also from Ward 135, Protea Glen, in support of my colleague here of what he said about the clinics and what so forth. But in the interim, I'd like to know what NHI package it is. But my question will be then, percentage of allocation in terms of private and public, what will be the percentage? Follow-up question I think would come with under service providers, as I'm from Seriti Medical, with the background of over 20 years in the medical industry. I'm in support with NHI because all those companies, who met hold more surgical innovations, all of them, you can name a few, who vasculate, bad save a whole NHI, it'll balance the equation. And also, MECE, please, go probably checking Barra, Ward 20 admission, Ward. It's like a sway range now. You need a serious attention. Also, with under service providers, I'd like to service provider, especially the black community, because in obtaining accreditation, SAPR certificates, it's very difficult. It's considered the white monopoly. So please, go probably consider it. Pam billing NHI, Pam billing, I could, I implement it.
Number four.
Good day, everybody. My name is Muzi Shonwane. I'm coming from PCOS, Ochazemotlana in Zone 8. This bill was proposed in the Fifth Parliament. It is being entertained even in the Sixth Parliament. We are going to the Seventh Parliament. It is a time that this newborn baby will emerge. I just want to support, I fully support this bill. With valid reasons, it brings the gap from the inequality, it makes sure that in terms of economics, that there's a supply and demand, that our people will receive health aspects in terms of getting these services. We do support because of the private sector. It has deserted our people because of their exorbitant amount that are charging our people. Our government will look for people in order to service them so that they can find an expression and seek to give them the proper health services. That is why I'm supporting this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number five.
Thanks, thanks very much, Chair Pessin. I'm not going to waste your time, Chair, in terms of contributing further on this progressive bill. I've been here listening to all the speakers and then it is very clear to everyone that our people are welcoming this progressive bill. Also myself, Temba Makubela from Deeplu Soweto. I'm here representing the community as a Deeplu hostel, informal settlement in Nomsa Moom, who could not make it here because of issues of transportation. But they have given me a clear mandate to say I must tell the committee and the Chair Pessin of the committee that they are 100% behind this progressive bill. Without wasting any time, Chair Pessin, I also want to also advise, especially when it comes to Without wasting any time, Chairperson, I also wanted to also advise, especially when it comes to the section where it talks about the appointment of the board. It says that the chairperson of the board, he or she will be appointed by the minister. But the deputy will be appointed by the committee. It further says that in absence of the chair and the deputy, the committee will seek and assign a person to chair. So I'm saying there is a proposal in relation to that. Both the chairperson and the deputy must be appointed by the minister. And for a period of one year which can be renewed. In relation to the board itself on the period, I agree with that bill to say the period of the board must be renewable but for the last time. And then in relation to the asylum seeker. The first person was presenting on the podium. He was very diplomatic when he was talking about the asylum seekers or foreigners to say this bill will only accommodate them on emergence. But I went through the bill here. I'm not sure if I must quote it verbatim. It totally contrary what you have just explained to say they will also have equal benefit, which is the bill here. And it cannot be, Chairperson. I'm not anti xenophobic, please register this one. I'm a patriotic citizen and for me to be patriotic, I must see to it that the interest of my country, the interest of my people, it is prioritized.
Thank you very much, your time is up, number six.
I'm very glad to meet you, I'm very glad to meet you, all the protocols observed. And I would like to say to our previous roadshow, Dr. Mukari, Dr. Masu, who gave us the clear understanding of the NHI. From Wat 134, Protea Glen. I would like to say to you, NHI, you have to be more clear to us. Those who are rejected it, I think are those who are rich, who I think they are more important than the middle class and the poor, I don't know why. When it comes to corruption, I won't be saying we are afraid to adopt things because we are afraid of criminals. We'll be implementing things, there are law enforcement that will be dealing with those criminals. People will be stealing on the NHI, it's the very same person who committed a genocide, who need to be treated as a treason. Since I'll be championing this, this NHI, there are few questions that I need to be put in place so that when my community asks those questions so that I can be more clear on them. The first one is the private sector is involved hundred percent. When was, because the last speaker said the private sector was still negotiating with them, how far with the negotiation? Because if the private sector is not buying this, you will have a much problem. Number two, our system that we're saying we are putting off the NHI. Which system did we use so that we can keep our health workers on the system? Because I'm afraid maybe other people, they must raise those questions, how can maybe my use them because of the system? Another thing that I want to add, people they must stop saying our public health is horrible, it's not horrible, they're overpaid. So you need to differentiate between the overpaid and the horrible, they are not, they are very powerful people who can care. Anyone who sleeps in the public sector, he can say he got the best medical ever. Even those who are in the private sector, they will not even get the best ones. Thank you, I adopt the NHI.
Thank you, number seven.
I'm very glad to meet you, I'm very glad to meet you, I support this bill hundred percent. I support this bill, I support this bill. I support this bill.
Amen. Number eight.
Chozong.
Ayade.
My lady, the chair lady, the chairperson. I would like to say, I'm a community member. I'm an ordinary community member. I'm a community member, I'm a community member. I'm a community member, I'm a community member. So I would like to say, I'm a community member. So I would like to say, I'm a community member. My chair lady, I would like to say, I'm a community member. I'm a community member. So I'm a community member. I'm a community member. Because I'm one of those survivors. So I'm a community member. Open up, like traditional healers, because I'm also a faith healer by profession. I would like to say, I'm a community member. I'm a community member. So I would like to say, I'm a community member. I would like to say, I'm a community member. I'm a community member. I'm a community member. Everybody have to involve. So that I'm a survivor.
Thank you, Reale Wuha, number nine.
I'm very glad to meet you, I'm very glad to meet you, I'm very glad to meet you. My report, I would like to say, Chairperson, finance minister, I'm a finance minister. So I would like to say, I'm a finance minister. I would like to say, I'm a finance minister. Do you want to say, I'm a private hospital? So I would like to say, I'm a private hospital. And then go publicly fifty cents. Now, I would like to say, I'm a private hospital. I would say, I'm a private hospital. And then, no, that one was covered. I would like to say, I'm a private hospital. So how are you going to draw the line? Because of the facilities, I'm a ordinary person.
Thank you, number ten.
My name is Benny Machona. Representing the tabar consultants and actuaries in partnership with Board of Healthcare Funders. Chairperson, MEC, the presenter of the presentation. I just want to draw your attention on few things. One, NHI. NHI, it's not only for South Africa. It comes from WHO. NHI, it's meant for a number of countries. It started in Germany by Otto von Bismarck. That's when NHI started. Today, where is NHI? It's still implementing in processes. My biggest issue is as follows. In Germany, unemployment is five point seven percent, UK four point three percent. In South Africa, it's forty-two percent. Where is this NHI going to be funded? You are saying in your document, it is going to be funded via tax from individuals, it is going to be funded via company tax. It's going to be the extra burden. We need to find a way of funding the NHI. I'm aligned to a position that says hospitals must be refurbished, you must build more hospitals. Because what it does, at least it's going to take away the burden. Coexistence of both private and public sector. In my opinion, there's no way you can dismiss this. Because once private sector comes to public hospitals, there's going to be an overlapping of patients. Those doctors that are working there, how are they going to afford? That is the first price that I'm doing. The second price that I'm going to talk about it, John Kutzen, sorry, Joseph Kutzen, from WHO. He said, NHI, it is a process that we need to make sure that we deal with it. Not in our lifetime, NHI is going to be fully realized, don't make that mistake. In closing, here's my elements where I'm concerned about it. One speaker spoke about it, Section thirty-three. At Section thirty-three, I think it needs to be revisited because it deals with the issue that relates to coexistence of both private and public sector. I want to talk about the board of NHI. The board should be independent, let's not mince our words. A proper board in order to function must appoint its own chairperson and its own deputy chairperson. Arms length from the minister, minister can't keep on interfering on every board that is operating. I'm asking to you that the issue of arms length is very critical. I will make my submission, ma'am, it is quite detailed, I'm sure I'm going to engage you, I thank you for that.
Thank you very much, bring the information to us, we will capture it in our submission, number eleven. Can we give the mic to the back, please?
Good day, Chairperson.
Ma'am, you will come, give the back so that we are coming this way. I'm sorry.
I'm a community member from Wat sixty-eight. All port holes observed. Chairperson, I'm very glad to meet you, I'm very glad to meet you. My concern are very few amongst others they have covered. This issue, private healthcare negotiation, what's there to negotiate? We all know private sector is pro-profit, it's never for abantu, especially Alitina who are poor. And with regards since the abantu really, does this mean when you are talking about service providers, are you also catering for Amma traditional healers? Because the abantu sit somewhere else as well, not just your western medicals. And infrastructure, it's, I would like to really emphasize on infrastructure. You have a nice policy but then infrastructure is lacking, it's not going to be fully flashed. Where I come from, we don't have a clinic. We have a mobile clinic that only comes twice a week, what about the rest of the days? It's will be again P and NHI when those circumstances happen. And in, which is a concern, how different is this NHI from the existing healthcare services in terms of providing? Because city national healthcare insurance, so in my humble understanding, it's for Amman nationals, right? Are you saying that those who are not Amman nationals, are you going to have a mechanism where the insurance will build Ammanan citizens? Because our healthcare sector is overwhelmed, primary healthcare all the way to secondary healthcare, we are overwhelmed.
Thank you, number twelve.
Good day, Chairperson, members of the Portfolio Committee and the House at large. My name is Besi Hadebe. I come from Diplo Zone Four, community activist, resident of city of Johannesburg. I stand here to fully support an NHI bill to be adopted and implemented. I think it is long overdue, Chairperson. Because if I recall before the COVID, sometime in twenty nineteen, this was, there were some roadshows. I remember in my community, Dr. Mukari was part of the people who came to present that to us. What is good about NHI, Parat, Baduli Ba, Khouteng, but Johannesburg? Is that it takes the bargain of those who can afford to go to private hospitals and access to good health and care services. However, regarding the infrastructure, Chairperson, we trust that the standard of readiness of our public clinics and public hospitals will be speedily refurbished. We also trust that the implementation of NHI, it will also create jobs, more especially for women and for young children and for foreign youth. Because we know for the fact that in our hospitals and clinics, that is short of staff. And with the upcoming youth, in terms of, we trust UGUTI that will also implement UBS. With that, I fully support that this bill to be implemented with immediate effect.
Thank you very much, can we go to number thirteen? No, ma'am, we will come to you.
Good day, everyone, my name is Dr. Vioyoke. I work with Caesar Hospital, that is a center of excellence for drug, multi-drug, RCTP management. We've seen you MEC, I think last week in our hospital. I also am doing studies on digital business. And I really believe that innovation will be helping us with the issues of influx in our public hospitals. I used to manage a district in Eastern Cape where we overlooked the whole district for the management of the RTP management, for the management of that. So there were about twenty hospitals. Now, all of these hospitals needed to have driven to my site all of the times, all of the days. And then people would sleep over in urban benches. Now, looking into digital business, what then happens is I am going to be able to sit here, let me say I'm a doctor for the skin. And then all of you guys stay all over Khouteng and all of you need to catch a bus and so on. And those are costs as well to the healthcare department. Now, what then happens is if I am able to sit with her as a nurse in each of. Now, what then happens is, if I am able to sit with her as a nurse in each of the places and then we are able to see a patient and then I am able to talk and the patient can see me, number one, the influx can also reduce. So, my question is, and all of you can go home earlier. So, my question really is, I'm interested in seeing what the digital health strategy for NHI looks like. And if, you know, people are needed to sort of come in and advise, sort of, you know, going between the private and public and diffusing many of the people perhaps going into private, overloading it, or even going back and overbadening the system of the public. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, number 14.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lefa Chame, from the Treatment Addiction Campaign. Just two quick points. As the Treatment Addiction Campaign, we wanted to publicly endorse the national health insurance. This is in the backdrop that we have been advocating for this important law or legislation since 2008. And we are happy that after so many years, we have arrived at the point where a bill will be enacted, an act will be enacted. This is also in the backdrop that it is long overdue. In the sense that, or in the context that, it cannot be that 85% of the population depends on the public sector. And it's only resourced with 15% of the budget. This for us will go a long way to bridge the gap between the poor and the rich. But secondly, we want to talk to the hospital readiness. Currently, our hospitals are facing water shortages, especially Rahimamu and Charle Mclag. And we are worried about that because it impacts negatively in the provision of service delivery. And if our hospitals are currently assessing themselves, we would appreciate an update as to how ready are our hospitals? Not only our hospitals, but also clinics. Our colleagues have spoken about shortages of hospitals, long waiting queues, at some point shortages of medicines in our facilities. And this is cause for concern. There are a whole number of other challenges that our facilities are currently experiencing. And we would wish to get an update in terms of how far our facilities are ready in terms of NHI. But lastly, I wanted to ask for clarity in terms of what is the risk adjustment capitalization, which the bill talks about in terms of the NHI find. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we get number 15? No, I will come this side, nee. I haven't forgotten you. I'm coming. I agree they are hijacking, they are hijacking numbers. Next time, I'm going to ask people to stand so that they don't hijack numbers somewhere. Welcome, ma'am. Proceed.
Bayete ma, bayete, Chairperson. It's Lebo Jamin standing on behalf of Amang Dumwa, Royal Kingdom. We support the bill fully because it will bridge the gap between the haves and the have-nots. Because the day we stop having private and public, the day we have ministers going to public, so-called public facilities, that the day the gap will be breached. And only capitalists will object as all basic rights, like South Africa, has been reduced to money-making scheme and we allow it. So, maybe we need to go back to our constitution and change that. And also, country have thousands of qualified Africans that can do the job to those who are afraid, good skills and whatnot and whatnot. All we need is an ongoing training, sinama graduate amaning acheli ekaya, that are not being recognized because Uto aman expect if I'm going to come there somewhere. So, the bill needs to also speak to that. And also, if within this system, all these incompetent nurses and doctors that bring the reputation of a healthcare system into disrepute, action has to be taken against that. Because as we speak right now, there are billions of rents that are being paid by a medical department due to negligence and all those things. And funders, when it comes to service providers, it has to be a mandate that local service providers need to be looked at. If we don't have, we've got resources, we, training needs to be ongoing. People spoke about training. It has to be an ongoing thing so that local people are equipped and we can provide from local people. Because there's no point, funders, baso niggas are imali, ipome, yo niggas were gopi gopi outside South Africa because then it will defeat the whole purpose of bridging the gap. Then there's a gray area also of services not covered by NHI. That has to be clear. Ugothi, which services are those? So that must be voma, se vume sasi. Because one time I had to pay imali because of medical aid. I badali i medication, esemisogo doctor, tumai, tumai, umdwanami beka premature. And then things like that, then as one speaker have highlighted, Ugothi, i 50 cent, i seven rand, i zone zone journey lap. And also, the last one. We need to build more infrastructures for this to be effective. Njongo ba i finance department, yetu isfagela ma triple six, lana go imali le enjas. Na, na ma triple six imali enjas, whether it's a 10 dollars time. I bill, I hope we are not agreeing to something that in the long run, sozogelokuti, for me as a community.
Can you submit the rest of your inputs? The three minutes is over. Sorry, princess. Can we go to number 16?
Thanks, Chairperson.
Coming.
This is Democracy in Action. I'm Benjamin Mohoje, coming from Nehau. And I stand here supporting the national health insurance. And I want to submit, Chair, that to the Minister of Health, the appeal is, the Minister of Finance, rather, the appeal is that the minister must decide, as the battle lines are drawn, whether he's choosing to be on the side of the people or on the side of business interests. The NHI wants to unify a fragmented healthcare system so that we do away with healthcare for the poor and one for the rich, one for the haves and one for the have-nots, and one that is fragmented between the public and the private healthcare services. We want to see our granis being able to access quality healthcare, whether in private or public, free of charge. Chairperson, we are clear on section 33 of the NHI bill. Medical aid schemes must only provide complimentary healthcare services that are outside of the basket covered by the BAC. The Health Market Inquiry was clear. Medical aid clients are paying as much as six times more than those who are in European countries. Their premiums are unaffordable, they are unsustainable and create catastrophic healthcare expenditures. And there can be no compromises here. We don't want to have any deals that are made in dark rooms. Medical aids must only provide complimentary cover. They assign posts that preserve racialized inequality in healthcare. Stat SA says that medical schemes have S lines, 78% of the lines are white. Africans only comprise 9.3% of the lines. So, this reflects racism. But also for healthcare professionals, section 59 says to us that medical schemes are up to 330 times likely to accuse black healthcare professionals of fraud, waste and abuse compared to their white colleagues. So, there's a clear pattern of racialized, you know, approach in terms of the medical schemes. And we want to say that we want an end to this racialized care. On section 49, Chair, we are saying that we must be explicit in terms of mandatory payroll taxes. We must be explicit that there will be mandatory payroll taxes and that the surcharges for personal income taxes must include also for wealth tax as well.
Thank you. Can you bring forth the remaining inputs? I'm going to go to the back because there are one, two. I know you are number 17, ma'am, but you will be the last 17. You will be 17B. Can you go back and give? Because there are some people who decided to join the queue and they took other people's numbers. I know the gentleman in the middle, please raise your hand so that they give you yes. Yeah. So, yeah. Yes, he's been, his hand was up on time and he was number eight. But somebody decided to be number eight. Proceed, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Tando Langalbalelemoy from here, Pier. I'm also, oh, I am a community activist and a member of the EFF in Pier Soet. I support the NHI even though it is, it is not far-reaching and long overdue. The NC government has, since 2011, when this policy paper was first published, for public comment, allowed far-right organizations like Afri Forum and Clasist, Economists, Medical Schemes and Private Health Practitioners to hold ordinary citizens at rental, at rental. Citizens who voted for this black government. Citizens in dire need for universal coverage. We were also under the impression that NHI would close the inequality gap that continues to persist between public and private healthcare. But allowing NHI to compete with existing funding scheme is an exercise in futile. South Africa needs an NHS-like system, which is universal and one-tier. The adoption of NHI will also help regulate pricing in private healthcare because there is collusion between medical schemes and private health practitioners, a deliberate attempt to permanently exclude the majority from quality healthcare.
Thank you. 17B. Yeah. But your hand was not up, sir. His hand was not up. But give him. Yeah. His hand was never up.
Sanbona, my name is Dagadana Ramaposa, coming from ward 119, Freedom Park, as a ward committee member. Chair, I won't dwell into saying that, Tina, we are supporting, we are adopting the bill. I just want to highlight from the things which you have spoken from the previous meetings which you've been holding. Number one, zotala guu faith-based. We've once held a topic. I remember the last time, ngamasango ma, Ugothi, they are affecting us negatively. So, it's part of health, lentole. Last corner, eh, Freedom Park, Department of Health, yati zozizo expanded in the gate till today, ekar expand. And we have been told, Ugothi, there's a budget. So, that's another thing. Yamaforenas, I won't talk on behalf of Haute, I'll talk from Langua Kon. Can you please come to our ward? Because, Tina, as what, Ola Ma Services, abantababu ya le ngapand, ibaba Tola Ma Services and everything. So, nyangkela, Chairperson, come to our ward. Come to our ward, Chairperson, and see the problems which you are facing. Tina, as our ward, we are saying, we don't want foreigners. Umwonto ozozza, azosava in our ward, can it please be that party IDO be certificate?
What is, what, what is the ward number?
119, Freedom Park. 119.
Thank you, sir.
Ibu yeguma streams, sinama streams I3 in our ward. There's a chemical industrial site, ibu ya from Mansfield, abalatela ngakon. I problem in zaga lay right now, there's a bridge we leak old in highway. We don't know what caused that bridge, so suspecta, liya chemical, liya chemical is strong, ya no, galaslanakon, it's everything. So, stella, Ugothi, na lay, we go to pick it up, they tell us about city parks, we go to city parks, they tell us about G R A and they think it's a health problem. So, stella li, yama streams, na, consider that, please. Ibu yegi, ama pest control, ama SPCA? Leadership.
Munda, wena, you were not, you didn't raise your hand.
I did.
And now, we are talking about NHI.
I did.
Now, you are bringing service delivery issues here.
Yes, leadership.
No.
It's because of, if I understand very well, leadership, this bill, when it says health insurance, it talks about the things which I'm talking and I did raise my hand.
Mara, okay, Munda, the bridge is for the city of Johannesburg. And we will now communicate with the MEC for cooperative governance to submit on your behalf. So, now, if you bring the bridge and the pests, I think you can come up and then we can talk separately on the rest of the issues that you want to raise, then we can submit those. 17C?
Good afternoon. My name is Alatum Zimela, I come from ward 54. In principle, I support the bill. However, I would like you to look at this section, section that I'm about to mention. Please re-look and review section 28, one, point A, where you say be a fit and proper person. I think it's too general. We need to find a way of saying, how fit is fit? Are we talking fit in terms of your muscles or fit in terms of medically? And how proper are you? Because me standing here can say I'm proper to be a board member on the NHI. Can we have definitions that clarify this area, please? It must just, it must not be too generic. Please, thank you.
Thank you. 17D?
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, Prof. My name is Teno Bosi, from Dinoza in Haute, representing 39s in South Africa. I mean, here in Haute. As Dinoza and Haute province, we are in support of the bill to be signed with the immediate effect and for implementation before the elections comes in the first phase. But with the following submission. Chapter four, it says that the C, the board must be, the established board must be appointed by the minister. We are saying, yes, we agree with that, but it must be approved by cabinet members. And then also to say that the minister must not have power to dissolve the board. It might, can maybe have the recommendation, but the approval must be coming from the cabinet. Then appointment of the CEO, I do agree with the fellow speaker, we said the appointment of the CEO must be somebody who have registered with the statutory body of healthcare in South Africa. Let it be South African National Council, Health Professional Council and with extensive experience in managing healthcare. Okay? Termination of members also, we are submitting that let the minister not have powers to terminate the member or the board members. Let it be have the powers to maybe to say they are recommending, but the final approval must be coming from the cabinet. And then also, on the issue of COVIDs in chapter seven, to say, we've seen the different committees that have written, we are submitting that can also have the clinical audit committee that will be able to audit the service standards or the services that are going to be purchased by the healthcare providers so that it can be able to look at length of stay and also the issues of the services that will provide to the patient where relevant. Then on contracting service providers on chapter eight, we are submitting that let the services or let the services be given or be ensured that you contract more of our community healthcare workers or maybe the health services that are based in the townships, doctors, nurses, those who are running their own private practices and also the pharmacists so that they can be able to decant the number of patients, those who are at the hospitals. Accreditation of a service provider. Accreditation of service providers also.
Hello, barre, your time is up, agere is three minutes, wena, oh, continue.
Okay, okay, Chair. Okay, on accreditation of service providers on chapter nine, clause thirty-nine, it says legal binding contract. We are submitting that the emergency medical services, ambulances, all ambulances that are going to contract these services, they must be all the same. Don't want to see Netcare, EMS, they must all be the same.
Thank you. Now, I gave you extra thirty seconds.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, the community have spoken. We are now going to responses. There is one.
Yeah, only one, Chair.
Oh, seventeen E. Number seventeen E.
Afternoon, everybody. I'm Regina Mastonguga. I'm in support, oh, okay. Afternoon, everybody. I'm, okay. Afternoon, everybody. I'm Regina Mastonguga. I'm in support of NHI. Retired but active professional nurse, founder member of RANU, which is retired and active nurses organization. And my questions are only two. I would like to know the role of medical scheme will be allowed to provide complementary services. What are those complementary services? My second question is, role of private nurses providers? How is the bill going to help or assist them? As it is now, medication is very expensive for them to see patients. I would like to know, how is the bill going to assist in finding the nurses?
Thank you, thank you very much. That was number seventeen E. We are done in terms of public participation. So, next time, we are going to stand up so that nobody is sneaking in. But otherwise, we appreciate all your inputs because that's the purpose why we are here. I'm now going to ask Mr. Musenuri to respond to some of the questions. Many were inputs, there were some questions. Mr. Musenuri, please, will be followed by Dr. Chikovu that time.
Thank you, Relabo Kadi, input, teledi editing. We have noted all of them, and most of them were inputs more than questions. But from my side, I will say that NHI is a vehicle towards implementation of universal healthcare. And then the role of public and private providers is to give services. So they don't have a role in terms of other systems. NHI will purchase services from them. So the tariffs will be the same and the standard will be through Office of Health Standards and also NHI requirement. So basically, all of them will provide services to everybody who needs services. I'll ask Dr. Chikovu just to answer some of the issues that he may have covered.
Thank you very much, Chair. I think there are three or four that I'll just quickly touch on. There was a mention of government having inadequate resources and the fact that where will the five hundred billion required for NHI come from? And as I've indicated, the financing element of it is actually the baby of treasury. But we also don't know, when people say five hundred billion, where they got that figure from? Because remember, the services that would be paid for under NHI have not yet been released. So we can't put a value at this stage. And also, when we read the bill, it's going to be a gradual process, starting at the very lowest level of your P H C facilities. So that's the response as far as the financing mechanism will happen. The question on what will happen to the private sector as well as the two hundred and seventy-eight billion that they have? So the private sector is not being pushed away by NHI, it will remain there. What the bill says is the NHI is open to both public and private, whoever so wishes to participate. So those that will opt to participate, they'll get registered and accredited. But very, very importantly, the two hundred and seventy-eight billion, which is servicing only fifteen percent of the population, you must remember that figure is in fact coming from medical aid rebates. Anyone who is on medical aid, the employer is going to claim that money from SARS, from national fiscus. So you and I still have to debate whether it is private money or it's actually government money. What will happen to the medical aids as well as the issue of complementary cover? So medical aids will continue to run. The big difference is there will not be any employer subsidy. That is the big difference. So if anyone wants to have complementary cover, they will have to pay the full premium from their own pockets because the employer subsidy will no longer be there as that will be part of the financing mechanism for the NHI fund. So there is no intention to remove medical aids. But those who want complementary cover, they'll run with it on their own. What is complementary cover? Complementary cover is any other service that the NHI basket of service is not offering. Any other service which is not covered by the NHI. That is what constitutes complementary cover. Just two more questions, I think, or so. There were issues around the poor infrastructure, et cetera. We can't run NHI until the infrastructure in the public has improved. Guess what? For us to improve the infrastructure in the public sector, it is a dichotomy. We actually need the money. And that money is currently split as follows. For every patient who is in the private sector, twenty-six thousand is being spent. For every patient who is in the public sector, five thousand is being spent. And I always tell people, if I give you twenty-six thousand to decorate a room and I give someone else five thousand to decorate the same room, please don't expect the same decorations. One of them will have an aircon, but not the other. So for us to address infrastructure, we actually need that money to be availed, which is what the bill seeks to do, to address inefficiencies and inequities. There was a lot of technical issues around section twenty-eight. The person must be a fit and proper person. Chapter four, the approval of the board should come from cabinet. The CEO must be professionally registered. How will the NHI find nurses, et cetera? These are proposals that, as Mr. Musonoke has indicated, have been accepted. But I just want to also draw your attention to the fact that the NHI fund is a section or a Schedule III A state entity. It is a Schedule III A state entity. The minute we say Schedule III A state entity, it comes with certain obligations of governance and systems, et cetera. So it can run its own course, separate from what is prescribed by law and legislative prescapes governing Schedule III A. But as I've indicated, all those inputs have been noted and taken into account. The last comment here that I also want to make reference to is there was a very important issue. Okay, there are issues about NHI versus non-citizens, what do we do in order to avoid them influx, et cetera. So the bill takes into account provisions. For instance, people who will now enter the country from anywhere else, once NHI is in place, they'll be required to have travel insurance, which is the norm. Some of you have been to Australia, et cetera. So there will be a requirement for everyone to have travel insurance, et cetera. So there's a quotation which says, if we wait until everything, absolutely everything is ready, then we'll never get started. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Dr. Chikovu. Can we allow Professor Musa also to take a bite here?
Thank you, Chair, and appreciate the opportunity to respond. I'm going to just try to answer a few questions. Some of them might be clarity for misconceptions. Firstly, I think that a question was asked, what is different between the current system and NHI? It's a very important question, and in fact, it states that in the bill that it is going to move away from the current system, which is where public service gives money to the public service providers by budgets. These are very unresponsive ways of giving money to providers because people look upwards for budget, they don't look to patients for the budget. It's very different with the private sector, where the private sector looks at you as the patient to say, do you budget me? In other words, do you give me money? It's fee for service. That can be very responsive. A problem is that you can have lots of abuse in that situation, where doctor says, I need this, I need that, what if, what if? And so that can be also a problem, yet it is responsive. So these two systems don't very, work very well. And NHI is needed because it is setting up a structure that in fact does what is called strategic purchasing. In other words, it allows it to purchase from public providers, in other words, giving them money and saying, do a service. But also, it allows the private sector to come forward and to be also doing the providing on behalf of government in an overall public system. So that is what the NHI is as different to what we have right now. Now, the way that, that idea is actually not just South African, it's all over the world. The Lancet Commission last year on P H C financing talked about the single pooling and the question of capitation-funded strategic purchasing and capitation funding for primary healthcare. I think there were lots of questions about, there are no details. It is important to understand the bill is a foundation. You cannot build a house without starting with a foundation. It is not answering everything. You can't do that because this is a big exercise. So it starts with the foundation being, what is the NHI fund? How is it structured? What are the committees? What is expected to do? These are basics, and that is what the bill needs to address to start with. There are probably going to be more regulations and probably sometimes amendments to the bill or new things that come around between them. So please understand, this is a time-consuming process. And as Dr. Prof Chris says, it is not something that necessarily will happen within a year or two. Just getting the bill in place with a fund may take up to two years. So please understand, be patient. I think there were some misconceptions, making statements like, this is about bundling into one system or a single provider in the country. That, those responses do not understand what is said in the bill, which is that it is actually about one public health system. It does not deny that there will still be a private health system. But what it does is it says, we are going to be a single purchaser, public purchaser. And so it takes the current system to say, we're not just going to budget public-owned services, we are also going to contract other providers, private, which is non-public. And so that becomes the single purchasing agency, which is the NHI. There will still be private sector people who say, I don't want to have anything to do with NHI, and nothing can stop them from continuing. Except, as we've said, in terms of when the bill in section twenty-three allows for the minister, and this is based on a condition, should the NHI be able to cover those services, the minister may then dictate that we don't need that as service by medical aids, they need to be provided as other things need to be provided complementarily. So I think the question was asked is, am I stopped from joining medical aids? No, there's nothing in the bill that will stop you from being a medical aid member. The way the market will change will be if the NHI succeeds in attracting private providers to contract with the NHI, which is quite possible based on the work we're doing in Soweto. Once they contract, you may say, I'm contributing to medical aid, which is possible, but I don't need it because I'm going to the same G P I used to go before and I'm getting the same service. So let me tell my medical aid, I don't need that. That is the way the whole medical aid market will shift and change, not simply by law and decree. The question of people knowing that their medical aid funds contributed belong to them as members and government cannot simply take it away. So I think the question of costs becomes something people confuse themselves about, assuming that somehow, when the NHI fund is formed, the NHI fund will simply take everyone in the private and say, what would you charge? Okay, no problem, I will pay. That's unreasonable. That's not something that expected. But what is there in place in the public, public and private care system are a lot of inefficiencies. And as we've heard many before, this fragmented system has created inefficiencies, not only in the private, in the public as well. So the costings that have been done, some of them very inflationary, simply extrapolating the current private sector to say, all of people in South Africa get private, that's what they'll get, it'll cost so much, unreasonable. Even some of the expectation that has been put on forward that it'll cost maybe double the current public cost of public service is something that just projects that if that were to be the case. And it is very dependent on taxation. So it's something that will be discussion in parliament, in budgets, meetings, et cetera, about now, how do we fund this NHI in a very progressive, gradual manner? I want to say that that will be dependent on the question that was asked, is what services are covered? That is obviously the key question to how much you then charge or how much you then pay, that will then impact on the taxes, et cetera. So it is very important that the government has actually said, primary healthcare is priority. And in fact, the work that we're doing in Soweto for Houting is looking at how can we look at the costings and the possibilities of running a primary healthcare system that in fact is very cost-effective, brings the private provider together and ensures that you, as a patient, get or the person in the community gets the right kind of care that is, that is effective. Now, that means controlling those who contract. So private providers can't do what they want, just like the clinic can't do what they want. So those systems have to be beefed up. So we are busy looking at bringing private providers to work closer, to start taking up contracts, current contracts with regards to family planning, immunization, to say to them, get used to this idea. And as we're going along, we're also sharing with them how the NHI will look and also what it is that we want in terms of accountability, that we want to see that they, if they're doing immunization, that they achieve the right rates. If they're using family planning, we get the right kind of approach that the government uses. And look at those same annual performance indicators that the M E C is constantly looking at to see, is the health system doing well? And she will be able to see it overall, not only the public, but the private as we are moving forward. So I think that's basically just a quick response to some of these questions that were raised. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Prof, for addressing those issues. Let me take this opportunity to thank you. You have left everything that you could have done in your time to come and attend to the NHI bill. We also thank you for the contributions that you have made. We will compile what you said here and the submissions that we have received to represent your views. So we appreciate it very much that you came and then you provided us with the inputs. I also want to indicate to yourselves that if there are still more inputs, send them to ngidg@gpl.gov.za or norgast@gpl.gov.za. Let me also thank the honorable M E C to be with us today and the officials that also took... and the officials that also took time, Mr. Musenuri for presentation eh, about Hauteing and Dr. Chikovu regarding the N H I. And also the responses that we have received from both and including Professor Musa for his response to clarify some of the issues that you have raised. The committee coordinators, I want to thank you. The researcher and support staff, information specialist, all of you, including the translation at the back, we also thank you. And also the sign language, we thank you for coming so that at least the information goes to everybody. I want to thank the committee members who were here with us today also. And the permanent delegate, Mr. Baha, who was here with us, he just left not so long ago. So we appreciate it very much. Those who received the gadgets, that, those translation gadgets, remember I told you, they also are having eh, a tracker. So leave them here, they are going to collect them. They don't work anywhere else, they can only work here. Eh, I also want to say eh, the food for yourselves. When you are going exiting, they are going to be giving you food. Take your eh, package of food as you are exiting. And thank you very much, you must drive safely. Thank you.